Only eighteen, no only seventeen I have joined. I am subtracting now two numbers because that one has joined, I am there. So we will have to be deleted from the list. How is that? Is because of the festival people are having lot of you know probably in activities pertaining to the festival. And you will see it is only seventeen. Plus two I and that Anapama. And we will not wait. We will wait for two minutes and then start off because we need to cover a few things which are very important. Hope there are no questions in whatever you have covered earlier. Because I have given all the details that are necessary for you to understand. Only today there will be a very simple integration. And I am sure people will be able to understand. Okay. But without that, no, I will not be able to explain the things. There is a reason why I said I will use you know simple integration. I had given the answers to the two numerics that I had given. Hope now in fact some had worked out in the last class itself now say during the class. That's good. However, I thought I will give the answers so that you can understand as to how to solve the you know numerics that are given. I think no, you are not able to see the P P T right anyway. I am now sharing it again. There was some problem I believe. Now you are able to see the slide.
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, good. In fact, till the exercises that we have worked out, I had put in probability hyphen two updated. There is the name of the slide that now that we have had earlier. In the last class, of course, there were some discussion about the bivariate variable and how they look like. Yeah. Yeah, all those now it is over here. Shall we start or time is running out, right?
Please start, sir.
Yeah, yeah, right, let them join. Number is a bit less. But this is a very important topic because we will be using this, you know. When we have two variables and your some now say entity is dependent on two variables. I had given the examples at here. Then how to define the distribution of now two variables? This is what we were discussing. And what I said is that we will not really have more than two variables because things will become tough at the initial stage. As the time passed by, once you know all the properties and the necessary you know formulae and entities in two variables, two random variables, then the things become very simple, you can easily extend. Okay. However, as I was saying, it is you know say no wonder if you have got more than two variables. But for the time being, let us consider only two variables. We can call them X and Y or we can call them X one, X two if there are large number of variables. Okay. And very similar to the single variable distribution, we defined even bivariate power distributions as well. Both in was I had just started, both in the discrete random variables case and continuous random variables case. Okay. However, I don't mix up. Meaning I will have two variables X and Y or X one and X two which are which both are discrete in nature or both are continuous in nature. Now we can have one discrete, one continuous and other around as well. X can be discrete, Y can be continuous. Similarly, other the other case. S can be continuous, Y can be discrete. Once you build this you know say simple theory, things become very simple. There is the beauty of probability. Okay. And what we said is that very similar to the probability mass function in the case of discrete random variable X. When you have two variables X and Y. Okay. And the function F of S comma Y is you know given to you in the form of a table or in the form of a functional notation. All right. There are two conditions to be satisfied by the you know function F. Either in the table form or formula form. Okay. And those two conditions are given over here. Okay. This is what we are discussing in the previous class, right? F of S comma Y should be always positive for all values of the random variables capital X and capital Y. Their specific values are small X and small Y. You know, here is where there will be lot of confusion. Even in the last class I said, let us use capital X and capital Y as capital X and capital Z in the case of normal distribution. I said, let us use capital letters and their specific values are small X and small Z. Okay. However, I may use them interchangeably also. Okay. With understanding that yes, everybody is following that. Now, F of S comma Y is greater than or equal to zero for all S comma Y. That's one condition for all S comma Y. You know, we will have one example which is in the yeah table over here. I will come to that. Okay. And furthermore, double summation of F, meaning F value for every pair of values of X and Y. Because we are varying both X and Y, you should have summation one corresponding to X, other corresponding to Y. How to do that? Very simple, not difficult. That's what we have in this table. There is a reason as to why I have put a table so that it will be easy for us to understand. Okay. Sum of all the function values corresponding to the pairs S comma Y. X is exhausted, Y is also exhausted, meaning if no X takes a value zero, one, two as in the table that is shown, similarly Y is equal to zero, one, two. You have all pairs zero, 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 one, zero, two, zero, three. No, zero, two, sorry, zero, one, two, I said for each X and Y. Similarly, one, zero, one, 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 two. Then two, zero, two, one, two, two. Okay. So consider all the function values corresponding to these pairs and you add them up, you should get one. Only then the function F is qualified to be called joint probability mass function or joint P M F in short. It is very similar to the earlier definition, but we have two variables here and F depends on both X and Y. Okay. Now, how do we define define the probability? That's what we were discussing. Then I was saying that in a three dimension space, discrete values are shown here along the X and Y axis. Okay. There is the in the lower plane. Okay. On that now is standing one solid now say, right? And naturally here, what we should consider is the volume of that particular now say solid now say entity. That's what now will be the total probability that is equal to one. Okay. Now, very similar to the discrete random variable, single one. If you want to compute the probability that X takes the value X I, Y takes the value Y I, how to do that? That is not by P F S I comma Y I. We can also use F. Okay. Even earlier I had said we can use P or F. P means probability, F means you know say yes, P M F. Okay. That is probability that X takes value X I, Y takes value Y I. How is it now looking like? Let me show you for the table. I am just now jumping now say, continue random variable soon. Say this how it looks like. Your function F doesn't have a formula. Instead, it is given in the form of a table. Okay. Say X values are written horizontally, Y values are written vertically. Okay. Now, corresponding to X equal to zero, Y is equal to zero, you have the first entry in the table inside. Okay. We can also draw lines here after zero. For X, we can write one horizontal line. After one, we can have vertical line. So you will have nine cells, nine cells. In each cell, you write the probability with which X take takes a value and Y takes the corresponding value. For example, in this case, S equal to zero, Y is equal to zero. What is the what is the fraction that you write? You write three by twenty eight. Okay, three by twenty eight. Assuming that this is a P M F, in fact, three by eight is three by twenty eight is the probability with which X and Y values are zero comma zero. Similarly, X equal to zero, Y is equal to one, say. That is with what already three by fourteen. Similarly, the next one, X equal to zero, Y is equal to two. That is one by twenty eight. All right. Now, I am doing now a simple technique of considering fixing the value of X and exhausting all values of Y. There is a reason why I am doing that. Okay. Then X equal to one, fix the value of X at one, then exhaust all values of Y. You get the entries in the middle in a column. Okay. Nine by twenty eight is the power with which X takes value one, Y takes value zero. Then for X equal to one, Y is equal to one, the value is three by fourteen. For X equal to one, Y is equal to two, probability is given to be zero. Okay. Now, now change the value of X to two, exhaust all values of Y. For X equal to two, Y is equal to zero, you have three by twenty eight. Yet for X equal to two and Y is equal to one, it is zero. And further, for the last pair of values of X and Y, two comma two, X equal to two, Y is equal to again value of F, probability is zero. In an experiment, that's what now say we have observed. Okay. Now, each value that you have got inside this you know say rectangle. Okay, where these fractions are written. Okay. Each one is a probability you will see because all are fractions right here, all are fractions. And furthermore, the condition over here is that all the fractions more than zero. First condition satisfied. And second condition, you sum all the probabilities corresponding to concerning all pairs X and Y. Let us do that. See here, S equal to zero, Y is equal to zero, three by twenty eight. What we have done is to sum all the column values that comes to five by fourteen. You can add them, three by twenty eight, three by fourteen, one by twenty eight. In the first column, you got five by fourteen. The second column, you can add, it is easier to do this way or you can add all of them, nothing, nothing wrong. It is nine by twenty eight, three by fourteen, zero, that comes to fifteen by twenty eight. Next, X equal to the last now column, three by twenty eight plus zero, plus zero, three by twenty eight. Similarly, you can also have horizontal sum as well, this is the vertical sum. For the sum also we can get, you can see for Y is equal to zero. Rather, now vary X, keep Y constant. Meaning Y is equal to zero. Okay, second component zero, first component is either zero or one or two with what probability is three by twenty eight, nine by twenty eight, three by twenty eight. Very simple. Then now say you have Y is equal to one, X is varying from zero to two. So what you get is three by fourteen, that is zero comma one. Then next value is three by fourteen, which is X equal to one, Y is equal to one. For that page, this is the probability. Now, X equal to, I said, yeah, we are keeping Y constant. So Y is two and X values we are varying. You get one by twenty eight, then zero and zero. And you can add now the you know probability is horizontally also. If you add them, first row gives you, yeah, three plus nine plus three divided by twenty eight because twenty eight is the common denominator. It comes to yeah fifteen. Second one is three by fourteen, three by fourteen. It comes to six by fourteen, which is three by seven. Right? Next you have one by twenty eight plus zero plus zero, it is one by twenty eight. Now advantage here is that you add the column totals, it should come to one. You add the row totals, that also should come to one. Am I right? Yes or no? It should be right.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
That way we can also cross verify. All right. So whatever I was saying here, the probability is we can easily enlist that will be given either or from the experiment also we can find out. Now we have other discussion around this. However, for the time being, let us not bother about this. Let us go ahead and study something about the variable X and Y both being continuous and we have analogous to discrete in a case as in the case of a single variable. We have for two variables, probability density function which is joint one. Why joint? Because two variables you have now. Okay. Both the various variables will be influencing the function F. Okay. The the joint probability density function or joint P D F we can call in short for the random variable X and Y. Yeah. Is defined by, meaning if no the joint, that function whatever you have which is depending on both X and Y, if it satisfies these two conditions, then this F is now called a joint P D F for the variables X and Y. Okay, very simple. F of S comma Y should be always you know say zero or more than zero. Then instead of now double sum, you have got double integration. That's all the change here. Okay. F of S comma Y into D X D Y. Meaning you integrate F of S comma Y first with you know D X between the limits minus infinity plus infinity. If you know the function is defined all over the range from the negative say left extreme to the right extreme for X. Okay. And then evaluate that and then you integrate the resulting you know say function which is you know say of course will be having only Y with respect to Y between minus infinity and plus infinity. That should come to one. That simply means now look at this, you know, in fact, Mr. Morty was asking what is the geometrical interpretation of that, right? Of course, I could get immediately the discrete case. But continuous case I wanted now in a suitable example. You should remember that this is very famous you know say two variable distribution. Let me now now give you the formula for F, okay. And here you will find you have got this surface, okay, surface. In all the four directions you will see that will go up and come down. Okay. On the X Y plane, it is standing. All right. And in this case, total volume. People who have done you know say a lot of calculus will easily understand total volume under this surface given by the function F of S comma Y. Okay. E is nothing but nothing but the total probability, total volume basically, total probability which should be one. Okay, this should be one. Now, for your information, whatever figure that I have given, it is the diagrammatic representation of bivariate normal distribution. Okay. We will be using this of course for some applications. Okay, please remember this is sufficient. I am not going to give the formula for F S comma Y. For X, you know what is the formula, right? One by sigma into square root of two pi into, there is a factor into e to the power of minus half, then bracket me X minus mu raised by sigma whole square. Right? Now Y comes. How does it look like? We will see sir that we are looking you know function later, not now now immediately. Let us now say remember that, yeah, this is the the diagrammatic representation of the bivariate normal distribution. Okay. Any difficulty till now, let us now understand because I don't want you to. Few things you may have to assume, please do assume. Okay. Hope the things are clear, right? I can proceed.
Yes, sir, yes.
Okay, all right, good. If Jyothi says, I will go ahead. Now, now given the in the case of discrete random variables, variables now joint P M F or given the joint PDF in the case of continuous random variables, how to get from those now say F of S comma Y now in those two cases? Can you extract? Can you extract the probability mass function or probability density function of individual random variables capital X and capital Y? That's what I was saying in the previous class, am I right? We must be able to extract that. How? By exhausting all possible values of the other variable. There is the rule to go by. Okay. It is defined for each random variable which is participating in the definition of the joint P M F or A D F. These are distribution of X alone without concern the values that Y can take and vice versa. For X, by exhausting all values of Y or Y by exhausting all values of X. And the marginal distributions of discrete random variable X and Y alone defined by the functions G of X and H of Y. See, what is that we are doing here in computing G of X? You are eliminating Y. How? By summing. Okay, how do that? I will let you know, it is very simple, not difficult. Similar H of Y is obtained by eliminating you say X. How? By summing retaining only Y. How do you do that? Quite simple. Let me go ahead and tell you how it is done. Then of course you will come back and you know see in the table also anyway. Formulae are there, let us now come to this. Anyway, it is given here also for each you know X and Y. See here, what is that being done in the table here? For X equal to zero, we are having all the values of Y and the corresponding products we have done. By summing them, you get five by fourteen. Similarly for X equal to one, keeping X equal to one, we have considered all values of Y. Then the probabilities are you know you know identified, add them up and write the sum. That's fifteen by twenty eight. Similarly for X equal to two. Okay. For simplicity, what I do is to write the values of X in the case of G of X. Okay. And all the values of X are given, that is zero, one, two. Then what I do is to write five by fourteen, the column whatever you have got now column totals, five by fourteen, then fifteen by fourteen and three by twenty eight for the values of zero, one, two of X respectively. Okay. For zero, I write five by fourteen. For one, I write fifteen by twenty eight. For two, I write three by twenty eight. Is it okay? You understood what I am writing?
Yes, sir, yes.
Now, what is actually it is, you will find here five by fourteen is corresponding S equal to zero, you are adding the probabilities by varying Y. Am I right? So summation F of S comma Y for X equal to G, basically you are writing G of zero. It is a discrete random variable, right? That's why we will have to have each value of you know say X and then compute for the corresponding probability. So G of X is equal to summation F of S comma Y. And now G of zero is summation Y F of zero comma Y. Meaning add all the probability probabilities in the first column. That's why I said you write five by fourteen over here. Similarly, consider S equal to one, add all the properties in that column, you get fifteen by twenty eight. And now consider S equal to and add all the probabilities. It comes to one, three by twenty eight because other two probabilities are zero. For the values of Y is equal to one and Y is equal to two, you get three by twenty eight. So you have got a new table in which you are having the values of X namely zero, one and two. And then you write the sum you got by varying Y. Sum of probabilities by varying Y. All right. And by definition, that's what is G X of X. Here, I have used capital G, we can as well use small g, okay. Anyway, when I send the P P T, I will make it a small g so that it is in line with whatever definition we have given. Okay. This is basically product X equal to X. By removing the influence of Y, how is the summing? Sim- similarly, so you have got G of X, right? This is the marginal distribution of variable capital X. Similarly, we can get marginal distribution of capital Y. How? We will have to go row wise now. Fix the value of Y, say H of zero. Where is the values of X? Add the corresponding probabilities. Three by twenty eight, nine by twenty eight, three by twenty eight. It is fifteen by twenty eight, correct? Yes or no? That's what I have written here. Y is equal to zero and the probability value of H corresponding to Y is equal to zero is fifteen by twenty eight. Uh by eliminating X. Now, when Y is equal to one, Y is equal to one, you have only two priorities, other one is zero corresponding to X equal to two. So you you have got three by seven. Now for Y is equal to uh two, by varying the X values, you get only one, that is one by. What do you get? A one by twenty eight. Okay, so you have got another table where you are listing uh the Y values and the corresponding priorities by eliminating uh X. Okay, now the first table gives you uh the G of X, marginal distribution of X. And the second one gives you marginal distribution of Y. Now let me take some questions if you have any. Is it simple to understand from the table? Narendra?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very well, all right, thank you, thank you. Now comes uh the case of continuous uh random variable. Here is where you will have the integration coming in and you will have a nice formula also. With the nice formula, of course, you have got other organs coming in, you will have to uh do the integration. Anyway, about one example, very simple one. Uh I suggest people who are not gone through integration to learn it from your colleagues. This is very simple, not difficult as such. Don't consider very complicated function like you know normal distributions, you know say uh PDF don't consider. One simple ones like you know exponential, E to the power of minus lambda X, you know that, no. Uh it is easy to integrate, okay? Suppose you already seen that, but we have got the third uh condition, it is not condition actually, it is basically the way in which you compute the probability. Uh in the case of two continuous random variables X and Y. Yeah, function F of S comma Y is a joint density uh function of the continuous random variable X and Y if. F of X, S comma Y is either zero or more than zero all the times. You have seen here the uh this in a particular diagram, right? You will find that all the points on the surface uh that you have over here. Which has got you know say all the uh lines being drawn, horizontal and vertical lines being uh present and cross lines are being drawn. And here X and Y. All right, and uh. For all S comma Y uh and this is a surface, you know, is uh as I said, you know, standing uh above the X Y plane. Or if you consider a room where you are sitting, uh one you know say uh line on the uh you know plane. What do you call uh the floor, okay, one is X, other one is Y. And the one which is vertical, you know, that is Z axis on which your function F is defined. Okay, just to give an analogy. F of S comma Y should be always zero or positive. And uh. Total volume under the surface, there is double integral, should be one. You are able to see, right, or is it a font very small?
It's okay, sir.
Now you are able to see, right, I have.
Ah, yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, I knew that there will be small problem in reading, okay. Next. Ha, now comes uh the third point. First two points are analogous to whatever you have seen. Third one is analogous to uh the corresponding one in the case of two discrete random variables X and Y. What is that we are doing here? See, P of S comma Y belongs to A, that's what it is said. Basically, what we are doing is. On the X Y plane, we are having some region, okay, X Y plane, some region. Uh and that region is called A. That region can also be defined uh using inequalities. For example, X lies between two and three. Y lies between uh you know one and four. We can always have this sort of thing. So uh two inequalities, whatever you have, as I said, you know, X lies between A and B, Y lies between C and D. A, B, C, D can have values. That actually gives you one you say small rectangle uh on the X Y plane. On the floor of the room there where you are uh you know, sitting and listening for the class. Okay? On that uh region that you consider, if you consider the volume under the you know surface. That gives you the probability. Okay, that gives the probability. How do that? We will compute that uh in a little while, it is quite simple, not difficult actually. See, it is here you know, for any region A in the X Y plane. If you have got you know say marble, you know say floor, you know, uh normally small piece of marble are being you know, of course uniformly sized, okay? So uh you can consider one marble and uh some solid standing on top of that which reaches the surface, just to have an idea. Okay, that volume is the probability with which capital X and capital Y uh lie in the interval A to B. For capital X, C to D for capital Y. Okay, now you have got one example, just see how the examples you know you have, this is quite a practical example that you have got. We have privately owned business operates both the drive-in facility and walk-in facility. Okay, drive-in facility and walk-in facility. Uh some restaurants, you know, quite uh you know, obvious, you know, example here. On a randomly selected day, let X and Y respectively be the proportion of the time. That the drive-in and walk-in facilities are in use. You know, uh people come by car, they may come come at any time, right? That is represented by a caplex. People who walk in, they will come by some you know uh either Volvo or Uber car, but they also walk in. At what time, at time Y, Y is a continuous, you don't know what time they are coming, there is a reason. For every uh not just into the real values also, you will have uh the valid value of now Y. Okay, so two variables, hope you understood, this is very simple example. Uh people uh either drive in or walk in and driving in time is given by X. And walk in time is given by Y and the PDF is given to be, given to be, F of S comma Y is equal to. Uh two by five into two S plus three Y. Okay? Here, X is in the interval zero and one. Y is in the interval zero and one. However, you are observing in one hour duration, okay? Uh how the people are uh joining? At the eight o'clock place, okay? Now outside this you know say uh range for X and Y, F is zero. Normally it is from uh left extreme, that is minus infinity to plus infinity for each variable. Now, we are restricted. It is not minus infinity plus infinity for X or for Y, it is only zero to one. All right, so F of X Y is given by this formula. Now what is your task by the way? You have to verify that F is a valid joint density function of the variables X and Y, that's one thing. Okay, how do you show that, anyway, you have got the uh you know properties here to be satisfied by F? You are going to the next slide, you can see the next slide?
No, sir, we are still in the problem.
Okay, okay, all right, understood, because you know. What happens is that when you are in the slide mode, if you go to the next slide, then you have got a problem. Okay? Now verify. Okay. What is said is that verify the conditions. Verify, one minute. Verify. Conditions. Of the definition of now a PDF. Point PDF, that's uh to be very exact, it should mention that. That's the first now part of the question, very simple, of course, I am doing integrations, sorry, but it is very simple to integrate, okay? Second one. I had removed this, oh, I think I had not saved, okay. Find the party that. Uh X and Y are in a range namely A, where A is what? All the values. Between zero point, uh X between zero point, one point, two. You know, one minute. Oh, one by two, okay, sorry. I thought it is, I made a mistake there, acha. Okay. All right, see, a region is this. X lies between zero and half. Y lies between along the Y axis, Y lies between one by four or two, one by two. Basically, you get a rectangle shape on the X Y axis, on the uh you know floor where you are sitting. Okay, now what is the priority of this particular uh area A or the region A? That's what you should be computing. Okay? This I am explaining uh just to tell you as to how to do this, if you are able to do, it is very good. Uh but for the uh examination, uh unless everybody is in a pretty clear about integration, we will not give that, okay? Because you know, somewhere hearing such you know doubts also. All right, uh you are in the same uh slide, right? You are able to see that? Am I right?
Yes, sir, the condition is proved.
Ah, yes, the integration of F of S comma Y over the whole region, say by the definition of S comma Y, you know. F of S comma Y is uh two by five into two X plus uh three Y. And X is in a positive, Y is positive in the interval zero to one and uh what is that, one minute? Zero to one and uh yeah, both are in zero to one, X and Y are zero to one, okay? So uh both the terms are positive and hence F of F of S comma Y is always positive or zero. Outside the uh region zero to one for X, zero to one for Y, value of you know say uh X and rather, value of F is zero, you want to be zero. By definition itself, okay? Now what do you do, we just integrate, how do you integrate? Uh some of you know, you have done that also. Uh first you integrate you know say the function two by five into two S plus three Y with as vector X. Okay, integrate that and by integrating you get two A square divided by uh five. Oh plus you know say six X Y divided by uh five, anyway, I am not going to uh tell you as to how the integration is done, okay? I am integrating this with X, thank you, Y I am not touching, okay? Two, it comes to two A square, two into A square divided by five. Uh into uh two, but two by five can be taken out, that's the best thing to do. So uh you know those techniques, especially those who do the calculation, okay? Let me not you know say take up much discussion on that.
Sir, doubt sir, I think uh in the third line, it should be six Y square by five, no?
Uh yeah, you are right, you are right, I'll come to that, I think that I made a mistake while typing. Uh six X Y divided by five, we should evaluate them at X equal to one and X equal to zero, enter bracket and subtract uh the value at X equal to one. Uh from there you subtract no value of this at X equal to zero. Okay, once you do that, you are ending up with two by five plus six Y, integral of that with respect to Y.
The sum could have become without multiplying, keep completely two by five outside.
Uh you can do that, you can do that certainly, okay, you are right, okay. Acha, now this is the function to be integrated with respect to Y. Uh between zero and one. Now if when you integrate, what you get is two by, okay, two into Y divided by five because uh integral of you know any constant. Uh is that constant you know say uh into the variable Y, that's why you get two Y divided by five. Plus, say, six Y divided by five is there, no, six by five is constant. Now integral of Y, Y is Y square divided by two. And if you cancel uh two from numerator denominator for the second, in the second term, you get three Y squared divided by five. Anyway, that you can verify. Now you should uh in a substitute, uh in this expression inside the bracket by one. You get some value, what do you get? It is very simple, two by five plus three by five. Minus value of uh the bracket at Y is equal to zero, what do you get at Y is equal to zero? You get zero only, right? So the value is two by five plus three by five, if you add them, you get uh two plus three divided by five, that is equal to one. So it is done. Whatever function F of S comma Y that is given to you uh in the uh problem. Uh this is a valid joint probability density function, okay?
No, sir, I mean, that's what I am saying, no, it the third line, right, is six Y by five, right? So it should be six Y square by five, no?
No, 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 let me come to that, say you have got integral of uh two by five plus six Y by five into D Y.
Right.
When you integrate that, you are right, you get that, see, three Y square by five, of course, you have cancelled not uh two there, okay? You do get Y square, after integration only, not before that.
Okay.
Saya na?
Correctly, correct, sir.
Yeah, correct, correct, yeah, right.
Yeah, 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 correct, sir.
Yeah, yeah, right, so uh so many remember, that is very good.
Ah, yeah, I, I, I know.
I know, because if you don't do that, uh you will have a real problem. Probably, I did not do integration or differentiation for fifteen years when I was with the industry, let me admit that. Only when I got into little bit of data uh mining uh for my project work in a telecom project. I had to do little bit of, I had to brush up because to understand, I had to do little bit of you know say uh calculus. Okay, otherwise I to have, I to have forgotten for about fifteen years. Then of course I got into university, so I had to know. All right, nothing you know say surprising, thikha? Now, a priority that X Y values are in the region A. What is the region? Zero to half for X, one by four to, one by two for Y. So if you draw the uh in the X Y plane, if you draw this region, you get rectangle, right? Of length half and then the width, what is the width? One by four, am I right? Simple, right? Any difficulty understanding this? X varies from zero to half, Y varies from uh one by four to half. So along the X axis, what is the length that you have got between zero and half, half only? Along the Y axis, it is one by four to half, meaning quarter only, right, one by four. So if you consider the region, it is rectangle of length half and width uh one by four. Okay. Now once the difference, integration, that's all. Priority is integral one by four to one by two, anyway we will not discuss further that you can do nothing, it is. Integral zero to one by two for uh yes. Uh X, so into two by five into two S plus three Y DXDY. Take somebody said them, take out half, yeah, that is better to do, take out half and then do the integration. With all that, you come to thirteen by one sixty, you can verify that.
Sir, I am unable to hear you.
Sir has told us to I think verify and he has gone for.
So you could verify that?
It's right, it's correct.
Ah, it's bigger. Okay. Now let us get the marginal uh density functions, okay? Or density functions as you have done by case of no uh discrete random variable, whatever you had earlier. You have obtained G of X and H of Y. Uh how do you get G of X? You have got F of X comma Y being given, two by five into two S plus whatever that, yeah, or three Y, okay? You integrate out no Y, earlier you had summed out Y, right? Now you have to integrate out no Y uh between massive and plus infinity. But uh outside the uh range, zero to one for X, zero to one for Y. Function F is given to be zero, so you can simply discard that, whatever is available is zero to one. Two by five, two S plus three Y, integrate you get that, verify anyway, you have to verify that. Similarly for H of Y, you have this, verify, give me one minute.
It's correct sir.
You could get this? Simple, right? Or you have any difficulty in understanding this? If you don't know or the integration I understand, otherwise it is a simple one, right?
It's fine sir.
Okay, good. Now with this, now you have, just a moment, I will just come out. Uh we have uh the definition of conditional probability. Whenever you are having two or more than two variables. In the data analysis, uh where we use analytics, this plays important role. Okay, this plays in the important role. Now let me remind you of uh one important result that you have seen. When we were studying probability, then conditional probability. Hope you remember that. You remember conditional probability you have studied?
Yes sir, Bayes theorem.
Ah, ah, yeah, Bayes theorem, the ultimate theorem that I understand, yeah. And uh given an event has occurred, okay? The event say uh A has occurred, okay, we know that it has occurred. Given that, what is another event, no, probability of another event be occurring? That's what now we were discussing, if A and B are two variables, if A and B are two variables. Say A has occurred, now what is the order that B has occurred, given that A has occurred, okay? And. Now of course we have got a lot of no uh real life scenarios wherein now you will have this type of no uh you know say important now. Situation that arise, alright? And in probability, when studying conditional probability, we have studied this and what we have said is that. Probability of B given A is simple, not difficult as such, it is nothing but. Probability of. A or B intersection A divided by probability of A, do you remember this? Probability of B given A.
Yes sir.
Yeah, you remember that, right, that's very good, now similarly. Uh if you know say I have defined B given A, similarly if you have got uh A given B. Meaning no, even B has occurred, now we should compute the priority that A is occurring. What is the formula for that, that also we have discussed. Numerical is the same thing. Right?
A intersection B divided by probability of A.
Yeah, that is very right. So. This is what you should remember. Okay, I am giving that. One minute. Now using these two formulae for priority of no A given B and priority of B, B given A. You have got a very important result that now we will get. One minute. I am trying to get one slide. I am just sharing that, one minute. For your, for you to recollect, I am just now giving the formula again, so that it will be easy for you to recollect. And. Whatever important is, the. Now I am sharing. It has come. Now. The formula that we are referring to is P of B given A is equal to PF A intersection divided by PF A. Provided PF A is not equal to zero, that's what no say we have said. Similarly PF A given B is equal to PF A intersection B divided by uh PFB where PF B is greater than zero. Okay, now in such situation, if you want to uh compute. Uh say X and Y be two random variable, it could be discrete or continuous. The conditional distribution of the random variable Y, given that X equal to small X. Is given by this formula, F of Y given X is equal to F of S comma Y divided by G of X. And it should be take care to see that GFS is greater than zero, otherwise you have X, F of Y given X is not given, not defined. Similarly, the conditional distribution of X, given that Y is equal to small Y. Is given by the formula uh F of S comma Y is equal to again F of S comma Y divided by H of Y. This what may you have as the definition of uh the conditional uh density functions. Now of course you may have small doubt as to how this is coming, this is not that difficult. Only thing is that now you have to remember the formula that we have seen earlier, okay? And there even I had mentioned the events and the outcomes whatever you have. They can always be mapped to, you remember that, right, mapped to the random variables. And I had said even mapping can be done and a lot of things we discussed now when I was explaining the random variables. Same idea you have to apply even here in this case, okay? Yeah, it will be bit hard initially but not that difficult. Now, how it is being done, I will just tell you. Now look at whatever I have pasted here, you are able to see that A and B are two events, okay? Uh and A is capless equal to small X, B is capital Y is equal to small Y. You have to compute priority that, priority of X taking various small Y, yeah, small Y. Even sorry, Y taking small value, small Y, given that X has taken value, small X. This is nothing but. See here in A intersection B, you know, both should happen, right? Probability of A and now sorry, A, event A and event B both should happen in PF A intersection B, am I right? Similarly, uh in the uh case that we have been discussing, uh priority that Y is equal to small Y. Given that capless equal to small X. Then what we are doing is to representing Y is equal to small Y, capital Y is equal to small Y. By uh B and capless equal to small X, we are, we are represented by A. Now. Uh PF A intersection B means what, both A and B should be considered, right? Both are considered and hence I am no say writing there, F of. Uh X equal to F of, that is P, okay, priority is, a priority that X equal to small X comma Y is equal to small Y. Divided by. Divided by PF A, what is PF A, it is corresponding to capless equal to small X. Priority of X equal to small X, that's all what we should do. Now is it true mathematically, yes it is true, but how do we prove that? Shall we bother about that, let us not bother about that, it is true anyway, okay? Uh if you have got any doubt, you can ask me. So priority of Y given small Y, it is same as your uh B. Given that X equal to X, that is same as you know event now, uh you know say A. That is equal to both A and B occur, meaning what? Priority that X equal to small X and capital Y is equal to small Y, divided by PF A is what? It is basically a priority that X equal to X. Now, priority that X equal to small X and Y is equal to small Y is nothing but F of S comma Y. You know that because both X and Y exist, divided by uh G of X. Because now, priority that X equal to X, the marginal distribution of X individually is G of X. And here as I said, because GFS comes on the diameter, GFS should be greater than zero, okay? Now here X and Y are discrete random variables, that's what I am assuming, alright? Now in the case of continuous random variable, same logic is applied. In the continuous random variable, what we do is to at the same formula PF. X equal to small X comma Y is equal to small Y divided by PF X equal to small X, that is equal to. You write F of S comma Y, there is a PDF, joint PDF, divided by. Uh priority that X equal to small X is basically individual uh distribution of no capless, right? So you simply write F of X, there is a marginal distribution of uh you know X.
G of X sir.
You may have one small, I am just coming to that, I said F of S comma Y for PF X equal to X, you please write G of X, okay? That's uh so that there is no confusion, yes, you have got some question, who, Professor Morty or somebody else?
No, 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 no sir, proceeds sir, no question.
This okay, I believe, right? There is no confusion regarding this.
No confusion sir. No confusion sir
Okay that's the reason as to why I thought if I give the definition of conditional probability to you Then you will be able to understand this because Y is equal to Y is an event X equal to X is also an event Only thing is that there are two you know random variables which will influence your experiment If you understood this other things are very simple not difficult okay Now come to the rectangle that now we have got over here X and Y be two random variables Discrete or continuous both are true only thing is that in the discrete no sorry continuous case G of X is nothing but integral You have S comma Y into D Y we will have to integrate over Y right that's all what you should have okay F of X Y remains the same The conditional distribution of the random variable capital Y given that capital X equal to X Is given by the formula written below F of Y given X is equal to F of S comma Y divided by G of X Condition is denominator should not be zero that should be positive Similarly conditional distribution of now capital X given that Y is equal to small Y That is given by F of X given Y is equal to F of X comma Y divided by H of Y And condition applies here H of Y should be greater than zero Okay this is the definition that we should remember now we will have to come to Some you say experiments where where Whatever we discussed will be Applicable Can anybody give the modified you know scenario in the case of now that drive in or walk in restaurant Anybody Sukesh You understood the question right The drive in as a restaurant you know people may drive in in their vehicles or people may walk in They come by some you know rental cars okay Now can you give one suitable example it is very simple not difficult
Not able to think sir
Is it okay Professor Ramesh Murthy
You roll a you roll a dice you get a six what is the probability that if you have got a six the second roll will be four
Okay
Something like that I mean both are independent so I don't think so because for the base formula to apply they should be dependent Both the events will be dependent while these are independent
Ah yeah wait a minute Professor don't worry about the base theorem right now right now though we will have that now say Base theorem version for the product distributions as well okay good to have that You just consider some value for Y people just walk in Okay now if the number of people who walk into the restaurant is too large Unless as Sukesh says we have earmarked the tables dining tables for the people who are coming by Yes who are driving in or who are walking in in case it is open who are come first will get that okay And you have got large number of people who walked in Under that condition what is the probability that people who drive in will get dining table Does it make sense Professor Ram Ramish Murthy
Yes sir
Sukesh
Yes sir so it can be it can be spread like with the ratio we know right what is the quality that Driving people will not get a dining seat or
Possible
Uh Will have to sit on a dining seat of like a driving guy had to sit on a walk in guys Dining table something like that
Yeah lot of you know say study can be made there the entire scenario can be analyzed using the conditional probability Of course you know we have other examples also especially in the I can give you See we have got you know say multi core computers right now supposing that now you can program the Multiple multiple cores of your processor you have got in your system you can schedule the you know jobs Or you are programmed to different cores quite tough of course but it can be done Okay incoming jobs are normally poisoned distributed okay and assigning Processing you know say units you know to different tasks or programs is binomially distributed okay And we can do excellent analysis of the entire scenario I am giving one injuring us example also Okay so these only one have given there are plenty others okay we will have lot of Practical scenarios wherein we can apply conditional probability distributions In fact we have what are called random processes and also the queuing you say systems All these are heavily dependent on heavily depend on conditional distribution functions Okay so there are plenty of you know say exams around in almost all the domains these are Needed especially the concept of conditional oh yeah I think Amit joined now otherwise I would ask Amit some questions Hello Amit We are discussing about conditional priority we have seen earlier conditional priority distributions we are discussing today Quite important one and I was I was also explaining different you know say practical scenarios where Conditional probability distributions are so very important to model Okay now let us open the session for some discussions you know some doubts if you have any Is it clear whatever I was saying or it has gone above
This is this conditional probability I understood sir but what you are doing before I think I have to approach some of my colleagues And then I will do that sir
Okay alright
No worries I will study that it's yeah some of those things I have studied long before for my PG and all
Okay good
Now I don't use those things so I have
I know I know yeah only when it comes to analysis now you may have to use of course in your In a project also whatever you take up for the PST
Yeah it's sir sir
Okay anybody others have gotten some clarity or do you have to give another example and explain Anand Kumar he is a bit silent today Anand
Yes sir sir need to revise little bit but even to
But okay right
Yeah
What we do is to add few more things some examples from the discrete side okay discrete no random variables And have a small slide deck I will send out so that now in the next class when you come It will be very simple for you to understand okay let us do that because it is a bit involved you know say topic I thought now let me take it bit slowly and with the example that you have got I am sure you will be able to follow this No derivations there are only integrations have given that simple one anybody can understand other otherwise you know say The things are quite simple not difficult Okay with this let us talk for today and tomorrow you don't have class because tomorrow is Sangkranth now what we thought is that we will have The classes now on Thursday Friday and next week of course now you will have Professor B K M's class on Either Thursday or Friday whichever is coming to him and I will take the class yeah I will take take class on Saturday In the afternoon I think now everybody will be at home let us do that way okay Alright
Sir when are the tentative examination dates sir
I think I told a few okay it will be last week of February and it will start The last must say Sunday Saturday Sunday that's what we usually do
Okay sir
And do you want at a stretch of giving you know one day gap or you want only on the you know weekends
We want Sir we want gaps sir
Weekends will be okay sir
Sir weekends would be better sir
Weekends in that case you will have Saturday Sunday then the following Saturday Sunday
Sir maybe I am asking this question again but sir there should be open book or closed book
We will make it now closed book only are you really interested in open book
No sir closed book is better sir
Okay then
Open book means we should know exactly where the answer is
No we will have closed book okay
Sir now with the closed book itself do we have this definition of practically applied only problems will come or we have to sit and derive this
Whatever definition have given are simple ones right I have not given any complicated definition point number one
Yeah
Point number two now some tables will have to be given okay what now we will do we will avoid giving the tables Instead we will give the necessary probabilities corresponding to the value of the variable Okay so that's what we thought we will do normally in Statistical analysis and data analysis course tables are being given no doubt about it because it's a closed book We have to supply we may supply them or we may give you know the table right you have read the values from the table also both ways
Yes sir
Priority is being read and also given the priority also read the value of Z right Those values will be given to you whatever are necessary in the you know given a problem I think with that things should be okay Alright okay alright
Your promise sir you will be easy on us okay sir
Yeah
You have to promise sir you will go easy on us not very ruthless
No nobody will be ruthless why should I be ruthless No 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 that won't be the case okay alright and happy Sangkranth again
Happy Sangkranth sir
Let us now meet in the next week Good night
Happy Sangkranth sir
Yeah
Good night